How do I get to the other?
Okay, well, I have my computer here.
Pull this one and start.
All right, we're late.
Please don't start.
And we do have.
It's gonna be YouTube.
Right.
No.
Hearing's not YouTube, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, is it up there?
Yeah, they usually.
Before y'all leave, I need.
Recording in progress.
They usually.
I can move and see if it's working. I can't even see it.
It shows.
They usually do both.
Oh.
That should be sufficient, right?
It would like it more.
Sometimes it's hard like this.
Yeah, I don't know. We've got a lot of problems with that, but we have.
We're saying. That's why I know I'm gonna be. Where it's all set. Just drop it out.
I'm not seeing our light.
Uh, yeah, I know.
It's ours.
I know.
Yeah, yeah.
What part of South Carolina are you?
Left. Where's Savannah? Here's across the Savannah.
Because my son was stationed up at the northern side on the Wood Drive from here to.
Breathe out in here.
Oh. Dolly Park, the place, uh, Pigeon Ford.
Pigeon Ford.
Good drive from here to Pigeon Ford, man.
Mayor, you're live.
Okay, guys, I'm sorry. We're a little, we're a little bit behind because of a technical difficulty.
Why? He going now? It's not showing.
Today is December 12, 2023. We have a public hearing, uh, that we're gonna start. Shouldn't take but a few minutes. Uh, um, so has everyone signed the sign-in sheet? I know I haven't, but I'll get it in a minute.
I did.
Can you, can you use that sign-in sheet for me? Did you sign it?
Yeah.
Oh. Is there any citizens input? I gotta sign it there. Any citizens input, uh, related to the, uh, the public hearing? Take silence to the no. Uh, moving on to the public hearing. Uh, consider a replant for Highway 276 of West Waukegan, Texas. Off of Highway 276, across from Shenandoah. The legal description is A0186 Carter Redmond. Track is one through three acres of 7.798, also an A10102. Zone commercial and request replant is in several lots. Um, is there any discussion or anybody that'd like to speak? Anybody?
Yes.
Was this part of your deal today?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I wonder why you're here.
I'm, I'm, I'm all over the place.
I can't remember your name, though.
Samir.
Samir, okay.
I'm with, uh, Z-Take. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sit down, some members of staff and everybody present, uh, to, uh, go over my, our project. So we submitted a plat, uh, a couple months back with, uh, we tried to do a six commercial lot on there. But, uh, it was not, uh, favorable for the city and how the city wanted to develop the property. So we, uh, met with the city staff, uh, Kevin, and we, uh, did a couple of, uh, iteration of the plaque and came up with a limited solution, what we can do on the plaque. So we, uh, we did, uh, on the 783, we did, uh, five commercial lot on fronting 276. And there's a 16 residential lot on the back of it, uh, adjacent to the golf course on the back. So we're trying to do a single-family, one-story home, probably somewhere around 1,500 to 1,800 square feet.
Where does this end up your? Now, we talked about the, the, the property that is, uh, adjacent to the Anvins.
The west, west side of James' property.
Okay, those eight lots or six lots we had.
Yeah, we had a sixth lot before and then, uh.
Now we're eight.
Yeah, right now it's, uh, uh, 21.
So.
It's five on, it's five on the highway and then the residential.
So before, I think we were talking more commercial and now you're talking residential, is that right?
Commercial on the highway and then residential. So it's not completely residential? Uh, we didn't want to do a multi-family on the back just because of the location. We didn't want to do multi-family, so. For the single-family, we did a pretty decent sized lot, uh, 6,000 square foot or higher on all the lots. And somewhere about, the highest one is around 10,000 square foot lot.
What's your price point per square foot?
Uh, not sure yet, sir. Oh, we haven't, uh, we haven't decided yet on that one. Once we get the bid from, uh, builder, uh, how much they want to charge us, depending on that, we'll set the price.
So are you gonna make all eight of these lots, or, oh, was it one, two, three, or five lots? Those will all be?
Commercial on the highway. Yeah, commercial on the, on the highway and then 16 on the back.
16 on the back?
Yes.
Josie Lane, huh?
Josie Lane, that's, uh, yes. Um, so what, what phase of this is gonna be the first phase? Uh, first phase is gonna be probably the single-family on the back. Really? That way they can build a, uh, connection road and take stuff, they can build with that. Uh, and then commercial as they sell it, uh, I don't know what, uh, the owner wants to do with it. Now you say, you say they, they can build the road, that's gonna be the developer, right? Yes, the, uh, the owner is gonna build the, all the single-family on the back. I'm just, that's the plan as of right.
Okay, and that's what's gonna, that Josie, Josie Lane is between the commercial and the residential.
Yes, and it's gonna be fenced in like, we're gonna have, uh, privacy fence all around on the backside of the commercial. So it's fenced in on the back, so they get a little bit of sense of privacy on the, on the commercial to the residential.
Where the, how, where's the golf course at? How far back is their golf course?
Right here. Right here. It borders, it borders.
Yeah, I know, but I wanna know how close it is.
Do you mean how close the fairway is?
Yeah.
Uh, the fairway is quite a ways over here.
It goes the opposite direction.
I mean, you do have some, well, for, I think, good. Yeah, you do have a driving range that they're driving, say, right in here, but they drive out this way and you have a fairway that's, that's north of that.
I live on a golf course, and I'm just, nothing to find. Golf ball.
Well, I mean, it's not for everybody, but there's people that do it and a lot of them love it, so. I know several people that live on it, and I mean, I don't think I would want to, but it's not to say nobody does, so.
Do you have a developer that's going to, I mean, build these homes for you? Are you selling the lots individually?
Uh, the owner is trying to build. He's gonna hire somebody, he's gonna get a bid from, uh, we don't have a builder as of right now, uh, but he's looking, he's in a process of looking.
And there, there won't be tiny homes or anything really small?
No, I have, uh, I can show you. Last time, last P and G meeting, I can get you the elevation, I got some elevation, I can pass you around, so you can have a look at it. It's just a preliminary, so there is like different homes, different floor plans, so. So I think the minimum, uh, should is around 1,700 square foot on those homes, so everything has a brick front, uh, it's gonna be one-story, we're not gonna build two-story on that. Just because of location, it doesn't, it's not appealing to build two-story, like, uh, fronting the golf, golf course.
So I'm new to the city council, so I don't know all the history of this, so, um, have you developed an area before?
We have, uh, multiple ongoing projects, uh, as of like, are we talking to as of me or the owner?
Well, yeah, I mean, you're representing.
Owner, yeah. He has, he has some in Rose City, he's doing Rose City, he has, uh, some in, uh, Pittsburgh, uh, he has all over, all over.
Pittsburgh, Texas, about Dangerfield, is that one of his two?
Uh.
It was a, it was a shopping center or a commercial?
It's right by the cell, that cell store, like, cell gas station, it's, uh, right next to it. So they're doing, uh, 18, 18, single-family, uh, uh, probably about 100-unit multi-family, and there's a three-commercial lot on the front.
And why did y'all choose West Waukegan?
Uh, I don't know why the owner did, but, uh, as far as that, uh, so we are doing some project, uh, we're doing some project right by the elementary on Quill. And, uh, we have some property, my, my partner has some property on there, so that's how I got associated with the owner. So we, we enjoy here, it's a pretty nice community and it's growing, so it's, uh, and, uh, it's right by the lake, so that's a feeling factor. They say I can answer that for you. Yes, sir. Because it's coming this way. Yes, sir, it is. Have you arrived, you know? I mean, that's the real answer, it's coming this way. I mean, they've already poured so much concrete west of us, there's nowhere to pour concrete, really. So they've gotta go somewhere else where there's no concrete, so they can pour concrete, that's pretty much the short and skinny of it. Yeah, they're expanding towards the heat here.
In that way.
Greenbelt.
You haven't been here for the rest of this.
Yeah.
So there's actually three sets of lots across from the PD, from the golf, he's the developer on all of them.
Okay, did not realize that.
Or the engineer for all of them.
Yeah, I was gonna say, but I'm not, I'm not, I don't have that kind of money. But, uh, I started with, uh, Mr. Josie, uh, with the lot right by the golf drive, and we planted that on a one multi-family, two commercial lot on there. And then I got associated with, uh, James after that, because they were doing the common drive on there, uh, and, and I was doing the planning for this one, just because it's same owner. So he was, uh, we were, he was intending to sell all of it at the beginning, but since the, the, it kind of changed the ways it's gonna be developed. Before it was all, six of them were commercial, so this one is gonna be five commercial and then all residential, and we might do the residential because it connects pretty much the backside and security aspect of it, so, yeah, I think that's, that's pretty efficient, I believe.
And this is similar size to what you've done in the past, or this is larger or smaller?
Uh, the development?
Mm-hmm.
It's smaller compared to what I've done before.
Okay.
Uh, we used to do like high schools and, uh, we're doing one in Minneapolis, 20,000 houses. So.
Let's fix the normal amount. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
So, once this is platted up, if it was approved and platted up, when do you think there's gonna be some movement? Dark movement, probably within this year.
Probably what?
Within this year, yeah, before you're gonna get the, all the plans approved. 2024. Yeah. I don't know. I thought you said, are we dropping, are we dropping equipment off right now? This year is running out. I think it's gonna go concurrently with, uh, the common drive, uh, with the Mr. Josie and Mr. James. Uh, the common drive and this, uh, subdivision might go and, uh, within this year.
We all have to probably rezone part of it because of housing in the back. Um, we've looked at land development, but they wanna be able to sell some of the lots, so I don't know if we can do land development, that's kind of a question for you.
Okay, we'll look at it.
On how we need to do this. But we'll have to zone somehow for those houses in the back, uh, before they can do anything with them.
And didn't I say on the map, there were some structures already on some of the property?
Yes.
On the map, was I missing one?
No. Well, I think you just have, or set back that.
Okay. Here it is. Turn your papers or that's what I was thinking.
This is city hall. That's city hall.
Okay, any other?
On there just to show you whether 200-foot were that we had to send a letter to. Do you have to send it to everybody within 200 foot of the property whenever you have a couple of care? Thank you.
Any other discussion, com, questions, comments, concerns? If not, uh, entertain a motion on number six.
I'm like a motion to close with five ten.
I second that.
Rob and Kevin on favor?
Kevin Patterson?
Not me.
Jack McConnell.
Chris Burkett.
Okay, we're adjourned. We will go into executive, I mean, sorry, regular session, excuse me, uh, in about 15 minutes, so mingle.
I'm stretching my legs, I've been driving.
Amanda, here's those, those checks I've got here.
Okay, it is seven PM, we're gonna start our regular session tonight. If there's anyone who would please stand for the invocation of the place allegiance.
How much gracious, Father, we're so grateful for this gathering here tonight, for the opportunity to serve our city. We ask that as we discussed our agenda, that we will make decisions that will be beneficial to our citizens. And please guide us to consolations and ideas that will help our city continue to grow and prosper. Father, bless our city staff, leaders, and city crews as they go about their daily work. Grant us your peace, grace, and mercy, and watch over all of us as we go about our daily lives. We ask all of these things, and we send you the same.
By the place allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Any announcements? Any announcements from everybody?
If I could make one quick announcement. And I apologize, I can't believe I have to make this announcement. But we would ask our citizens, please do not put motor oil down any drain or toilet. Because that will not be good for our wastewater treatment facility. So please, there is no need to ever put used motor oil down the drain.
As well as flushables, which are not flushable, and then what else?
And women's.
Oh diapers, anything you can name.
Women's hygiene products.
Toilet paper only.
One more, one more quick thing, if everyone could keep Kim in their prayers, she had surgery tomorrow.
Thank you, Michael. Any citizens input related to the agenda items? Any? None? Going on the consent agenda of number six. Approval of many for November of twenty-three, approved bills to be paid and those to be paid for November. Approval of financial reports for November, the court report for November, police department report for November. Public works, work orders, report both completed and outstanding for November. And a public forest report is for November, permit report for November, code enforcement report for November. EDC minutes, we have nine, keep walking beautiful, we got for October. Planning and zoning, looks like they're getting all caught up. We got them from November of twenty-one, December twenty-one, January twenty-two, March twenty-two, June, August, October, November, December, and then January of twenty-three, May of twenty-three, September, October, and November of twenty-three. Chair of the county motion?
Mayor, real quick, before we do that, and I apologize, I usually get up here and ask questions about this stuff Monday or Tuesday. But unfortunately, this week I haven't had that luxury. I will try to come up. Can you be here for a day? No, that's right, you're getting surgery. So I may come up next week, I guess, and try to talk to Kim. There were a few things that I seen, like there was vehicle fuel on the general fund under admin. So, I mean, we don't have to go through those things, because in my opinion, it's really not a time to say these. But I just wanted to say that I want to make a motion that we approve these consent agenda items. With, I guess, sidebar, that a conversation that I'm allowed to have with Kim next week. That we can maybe talk these over and get some of these things corrected.
Yeah, some of what might be seen on general fund for his fuel would be, she went to class.
Well, and it may be, but the only concern I had was we didn't budget anything.
Oh, yeah.
And then there was, there was, so just a real quick elaboration, there was a few, there was quite a few areas that showed up no budget. And I just, I don't remember, and I, I didn't.
Those are all blank, I see that blank.
And I don't, I didn't get the time to be able to get my old one, I didn't just, I didn't look for it. I couldn't find it, it wasn't right there where I usually keep it, so.
Can we make it and just pull that out next month, double up on it?
Well.
The permit minus the minute.
Maybe that's the better way to do it. So I mean, so like Chris's suggestion, so I want to make a motion, we approve the consent agenda items. Less items six C for the financial reports. And then we can, if we could get those corrected, I'll work with Kim to get those corrected next week. So they'll be in our January's council meeting.
Chris second highest favorite?
Kevin Featherston.
Jack O'Connell.
Robin Meyer.
Chris Burkett.
Moving on to number seven, old business, discussing our action on the update of city Facebook. Robin's done a little bit of research, I think in the last moment, we've talked about this. And he was gonna hit with a couple of other cities and check and see how they're doing it. And if anybody would like a copy of this, I guess, email at the Kim or myself and myself.
I have some extra ones here. I have five extra.
We could get everybody a copy of that. So basically, Robin, what did you, what did you uncover?
Well, what I did was, is I did this probably a month ago when we reinstated the Facebook page. And I said that I would go talk, try to contact or just review some of the other cities around us, their Facebook pages. So I did research five cities in our area, and those cities were Cleveland, Edgewood, Wilspoint, Emery, and Lennon. I spent about three days and many, many hours researching these. I read through all of their years, some of their posts and their comments and things on their Facebook pages. And I also went and looked at who were their admins, who were their, if they had moderators. I mean, I, I got very, I did a really deep dive into all these Facebook pages. I did call some of these cities and asked that somebody, if somebody would please return my calls. And I, I had one that did, and I spoke to their city secretary and employee in charge of events. And they asked that I not use their name, that I could use their information. So I'm gonna go ahead and say that I'm not gonna use their name. The others I researched by reviewing numerous pages and years of comments. But the one common denominator that I found in all the information that I gathered in all five cities at their Facebook page was used for information. Some had their pages linked to their city's websites. But, and, and the only thing I didn't see on any of these Facebook pages is they did not publish their Zoom meetings on them. Not one of those cities did. And that kind of surprised me because there's people that want to be able to attend our meetings or view our meetings. And they're not being able to unless they go to like YouTube or one of the other social media sites. Or if they want to go to their websites. Like, like I said, a lot of the cities had their Facebook pages linked to their websites where you could do that. Some of them had, and most of the, most of those videos were posted on individual like boards, like EDCs, planning, parts, and rec. On their individual Facebook pages, or you could go to YouTube. When I, when I asked or I checked to see who the admins were on these pages, I was told or I found that only mayors, city administrators, managers, and city secretaries were mainly allowed to be the admins. Department heads, police chief, code enforcement, park and rec, and other departments were allowed to post, but only with approval by one of those admins. However, it was evident to me that some of the department heads, police chiefs, et cetera, were allowed to post without permission. It just varied from city to city. And then some of those cities also had their own police department pages, like I think we have one, do we have one? Our parks and rec have their own pages. So, so if you have your own page, people were using those too. I even looked at some of those, and they were absolutely using those. In one city, I asked about council members being able to post on the city's pages. And one city told me that they did not allow their council members to do that because they were afraid that they might run into some kind of legal issue. Because somebody might misquote something, or they might promise something or say something that they couldn't live up to or what have you. And it might cause some kind of legality within that, within that conversation. I didn't find any evidence of council members commenting in other cities, but like, I don't know a lot of those council members in those cities. So I, that was kind of a, a direction, I had to go a different direction. There were no moderators listed on any of those pages, any city pages that I looked into. And if they were, they were not listed, like I said. And no public ads were at, were allowed on any of those pages or accepted. And most city pages were updated daily. I mean, that's what I found, that there, there was only one city that there was not a lot of activity on. And believe it or not, it was Emery, I couldn't find a whole lot on them. But I do know that there's a lady there that has a community page, and she, she does list like all different kinds of things. Events and community calendars and that kind of thing. And then what I did was, on the second page, this whole entire page is full of all the things that these cities posted on their Facebook page. And they are varied, anywhere from road closures to gas leaks, and some of them don't pertain to us. Gas leaks, burn bands, rescind bands, boil water notices, any type of power outages. If like, and I know we've had, we've had a computer outage here before, they listed those on those pages. If there were any software, software upgrades that were being made, they had to shut their computer down, they told about those. They even went through school zone laws and regulations, bus stop information, law enforcement bit bullos. Hit and run incidents, if they were asking for information on those, drug busts, traffic alerts, criminal apprehensions, trash and refuge pickup, water sewer, there was just all sorts. They even, they even one city listed if they had equipment for sale, that you could go on there and check out the equipment. And, and if you wanted to, information on submitting a bid on those, on that equipment, you could do it through there. Some schools, some of them had school district notices, found or loose animals, railroad crossing blockages, solicitor permits. This one was an interesting. They would, if somebody comes to the city and wants to solicit within their city, you have to get a permit. And you have to submit a photo of yourself with comments regarding what they're soliciting. Which I thought that was really interesting, because it keeps people from coming in here and going door to door soliciting things they're not.
We have ordinance on that.
You have ordinance on that, okay. They also, any kind of city closures for holidays, illnesses, power outages, water issues, job openings, and where to submit applications, if you had an HR department, they would guide you to that. Any kind of county closures, city water cleanups, information on how to apply for the HUMCRO program, which we have, we offer here. Referrals to citizens to obtain answers to post or questions to speak, speak with or make an appointment with, to talk with someone at city hall. Public library openings and closures, anything that referred to the park, upgrades, rehab. In any city sponsored events, we're absolutely on activities, fundraisers, memorial celebrations. And there were even some cities that had senior citizens centers. You could go on their Facebook page, it would give you menus and events that were happening at those senior citizen centers. And the last one on here was some, there was one city that even had a summer internship job program for youth that were interested in governmental positions, so they could come and watch and train. So that's just a, that's just, and that's just a brief summary. I've got about ten pages of notes that had all these different things on it. And my, I guess my last comment on here was, the most important thing that was clear to me was that no city had their comments turned off. All comments were allowed, and in some instances, they were welcome. All citizens and public are given the right and opportunity to voice their concerns, or disclosures, or phrases, or their accolades. All citizens and the public have the right to be heard, and they should be. The only exception should be, maybe we should be able to control the use of foul language, obscenity, pornographic language, or videos, or photos. And I just have a personal comment, I think that a city Facebook page is a wonderful tool to keep our city and our citizens and the public informed. And we should do our due diligence to ensure that everyone receives information in a timely, transparent, and courteous manner. That's just a brief overview of what I did.
Thank you for doing that.
It was, it was very lengthy, very detailed. And I don't know, do you have, anybody have anything they want to add to that? I think reinstating a Facebook page for us is necessary.
I don't know if it's got the, we had a Facebook page, I don't know where it's at or who's got access to it.
I don't know where that one is.
Anyways, any other comments or concerns?
If we don't have access to that one, before I got on council, I created one with the city council or the city west walking name. So that certainly can be addressed.
Yeah, we had one, maybe got deleted, I don't know. We did have a Facebook page at one time, and I guess. Anybody else? Kevin, Chris, anybody else got any input on that? What's our next plan?
Yeah, so for, for this kind of stuff, since I knew the council, you know, this is a big undertaking. So in terms of resources, who's actually responsible for this?
Well, that's what we need to structure.
Yeah.
Is who's the key player, who the key player might be.
Well, like I said, if you look on that, I think it's maybe the second or third paragraph. That mayor, city admin, city secretaries, and department heads were the ones that all were admins. Some cities had multiple ones, some only had one. So I don't know who you want to lay all that responsibility on one person, or if you want to divide it up, or how do you want to do that?
I would probably recommend a small, little committee that gets together and talks about what the goal of the Facebook page is. Because if we try to accomplish all of these things, it would be very watered down. And it would be too much for even two or three people to handle. So I would suggest that we get a group of people together, what is the focus and the mission of the Facebook page? Where do we start? Let's start small, and then who's responsible for what?
So a workshop then?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have to really structure this thing.
So with, with the committee she's mentioning, do you feel like that that committee needs to be something that the employees, probably starting with Kim, they discuss and figure out internally who they think would be the best to be the handlers of that Facebook? Right, the admins?
Yeah.
I'd like to get some citizens involved too, so that.
Well, I mean, as far as input, yes, but what I'm saying is, I think, I guess what I'm getting at is, so like in my world, the business world, if you got something new that's coming up, and if you just throw it on people, there's not a lot of willingness or ownership. Right? So like, what I'm getting at is, if, if we get our employees to talk about it internally and figure out, they can discuss, hey, I'm weak at this, or hey, I feel strong at this, or yada yada, whatever. And you get this internal ownership, then we would have a better result, in my opinion. Than just saying, we're gonna have a Facebook, and you're gonna handle it, you're gonna handle it, you're gonna handle it. Well, out of the three of you, only one of you may really care to handle it, the other ones aren't going to. So, I mean, I just don't want to create a.
Yeah, that's why.
I don't want to create a bad juju in doing this, because then it's just gonna be a flaw.
Yeah, that's why I mentioned it, because I have absolutely no idea what their bandwidth is. And based on all of the papers that I have in this packet, I can imagine you are very busy. So I, I personally can volunteer to help in any way, if that is acceptable. Yeah, I mean, citizen input, you know, what do you all think about it? I'm open for whatever, personally.
We could do, we could do a workshop, you know, after the first year sometime. And I don't want citizens to be involved, you know, so they get some input.
I mean, if we do a workshop, it's, that's what it is, I mean, anybody could come.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Who else, one more than, than us?
So our meeting, our January meeting's gonna be on the night. Do we want to have it that same week, or do we want to skip a week, or?
I know that's, right now, I'd be.
The night is?
No, the night, but the tenth, eleventh, twelfth on that. But I mean, I want to be there.
The week of the fifteenth, of course you do.
Well, I mean, if I can, if you said it, I can make it. We'll be closed on the fifteenth, I'm sure. Want to do the M.O.C.A.?
What day is it?
That's, that's Tuesday. That'll be our, that'll be our meeting for January council meeting, regular, regular session. I mean. Well, did you say that the week of the fifteenth, you've got a bunch going on?
No, I don't.
Oh.
Not that way. You said the sixteen?
So we can do it the following Tuesday after we're closed the fifteenth, right?
No.
Oh no, we're not closed.
I was thinking we were.
No, we're not, that's not a holiday.
You want to make it at six thirty?
Six thirty on the sixteen?
Does that work?
Six thirty on the sixteen?
Yeah.
Set a timeframe on it, one hour?
I'd leave it open. I mean, we start at six thirty, and I'm sure it won't. I mean, we start at six thirty, and I'm sure it won't be no two or three hour deal.
Could be.
We need to set a timeframe line, we've learned that the hard way.
I would say six thirty to seven thirty. I mean, that's my.
And if we need to have another one after that, that's fine, but if we don't set something, then we'll be here.
That's my half a cent anyway.
You don't want to have dinner, and breakfast here?
Want to get it done, we can see how it works.
So will the chairman entertain a motion on item seven A?
I make a motion that we have a Facebook workshop on January sixteenth, um six thirty to seven thirty.
I'll second it.
I'm in second, uh, on favor?
Kevin Featherstone?
Jack O'Connell, Robin Mays.
Chris Burkett.
Okay, we went on to seven B, discussing and, and/or action for increase in water rates and estimating of sewer charges. Guys, we've, you know, we've had this talk for a while, I think we last increased the water rates uh in the city at eighteen, when was it? Uh it's been about four years.
I think we got this.
Yeah, you should, but just in case. It is not something that none of us want to do. I mean, we're all residents too, we all pay water bills, and you know, we're already getting hit with taxes, and all the other increases at groceries, gas pumps, everything, we don't want to do this, but our cost keeps going up and up and up for everything. Um from chemicals to materials, the, you know, the labor that we have to put into some of that. We're, we're gonna have to do something. Our idea was to es- uh do an estimate of the sewer so that you're paying the same sewer rate every month to offset this increase. Do you think that, that, is this gonna achieve that?
I would equate it to going to wind start, I mean, you, it's, it's gonna be a benefit to the customer, no doubt, hands down. The cities that we've contacted that, and it's been a success for the cities who went to it, but the first years will be hard for everyone, that first year the unknown. Because the, the price difference between, let's say, September and December is about a third of what it, it would be in September. So, you know, let's say in December, you're paying thirty five dollars for your sewer bill. On September, it could be sixty dollars, it could be eighty dollars. So the average bill works out for the citizen because it makes it to where they can water their plants, fill up their pool, and they're not gonna have to pay that sewer rate. The, the downside is, is we've set our budget, that's the realistic part of it, we've set our budget. So I would, I would equate it to the trash, for instance, you know, six point five, two percent increase. We had already set our budget. So, you know, it's gonna be a gamble, I think in the end, it will benefit all of the citizens. So I'll give you this example, and Ken brought this, and I found he was absolutely hands down right. From June, July, August, and September, they're not even going, going to notice an increase on the water. They're not gonna notice it, because their savings is gonna be three times greater on the sewer part of it. Really, the only time that they would even, and I don't even think they're gonna notice it next December, but it would be December, January, and February that they notice the water increase. And again, I don't even think they're gonna notice it then. So, you know, we, we spent a lot of time, especially Ken and I, working on the budget, Ken and I, trying to make sure that we were very, very frugal in this budget year. And my only fear would be that part of it is, you know, this first year is gonna be a pretty serious learning curve for us. All the cities that have tried it, lost in their first year, but were successful ongoing. So once they went through that first year and learned those lessons, they were able to set their sewer budget to match the sewer bill.
And that, and that's why they were successful in moving forward, is because they were able to say that we didn't. We set our budget awful tight. Average savings, would you say, per household, just an average?
Looking at an entire year?
No, monthly. Thirty dollars, twenty dollars?
Yeah, your average savings would be about twenty five to thirty dollars.
Didn't you put something around?
I did.
It is, yeah.
I was hoping you'd get to look at it too, because it, I used a few council members as an example for you guys to look at. Now, I didn't use everyone, I used some of you. But just so you could see what you're paying for that entire year, and then look at December, January, and February, because that's what the cities were doing. You know, I had the idea that we should include one month of spring, but as it would turn out, these cities that did it and had success, used December, January, and February, so, which were the lowest months for them across the board. So, listen, it's, it's, it's gonna be a learning year if we do this, but at the same time, I really think in the end, the citizens are gonna see that we care about them. They're gonna see that we care about them. Now, most people are not gonna care how it affects our budget, some, most won't. But I think with the water increase, they're not even gonna notice it. So it helps us with the water part of it, but yes, the sewer part of it, it is a risk.
So we're increasing the water part because we need it, we need it. So this offset really has nothing to do with that.
No, I'm just speaking in terms of customer relations side.
What this, what this does, the bottom line of this is, is it's gonna give the citizens what they're paying for, right? So, and what that means is, during the summertime, when you're watering your grass and you're watering your flowers, and if you got dogs, and you're having to fill their water bowl up every single day, and you get charged for sewer, for all that water that you're putting outside, then they're paying for something they didn't get. And it's just something that we've missed, and a lot of cities have not, there's been a, a ton of cities have done this average, average sewer billing for years. West walking just missed that, no, no, it just never happened. And at the end of the day, nobody's happy with not getting something that they pay for, right? But everybody's happy with getting what they paid for. And that's what's gonna happen, is we'll all get what we paid for. We'll, we'll pay for the water that we get. Your sewer's not gonna change, I mean, when you think about it, you, you're, you're gonna have about the same amount of sewer usage inside of your home throughout the whole year. You only do what you do inside your house, and then, but you go outside during the nicer times of the year, and you use a lot more water outside. And that's the idea behind it, is, is give every, give us all as citizens what we're paying for.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I left that part out. Technically, really, you are paying for something you're not using, we're not collecting that water if you're outside watering. So that was the whole premise that started that movement in, in water sewer billing, was you're not charging them for something they're not using. I mean, that's kind of what got it started.
Right, and the idea of using the, the, December, January, February?
Yes.
Was because that was the lower, if we averaged the peak times of the year, July, August, September, uh then it would be a very high average, you'd be paying them on. So.
I did suggest at the last meeting, and I, and I've suggested this to Kevin, but of course I did my homework, and found that cities are doing December, January, and February, I suggested doing February, March, and April. But no other cities are doing that, not one. They're all doing December, January.
Here's the problem I see with this right now. We just did uh outside water rates last year?
Uh, two years now.
Was it two years ago? I mean, it was four or five years ago.
It was before her, so she's saying three years.
Yeah, about three, three years ago.
Isn't that long ago?
Well, Tom, Tom Plons.
We're, because there's probably only a few residents that have sewer as well as water, right?
You're talking about outside?
Outside city limits.
Right, there are certain neighborhoods outside city limits, like Quell Run Edition or Hillcrest Edition, there are some that have sewer, yes.
There's, there's a few, there's, I mean, it's not just ten.
What?
I'm just, I mean, there's, there's multiple.
Don't need to remember one thing going forward though. When you give up this revenue source, you're giving up which is basically charging for treating, for treating water you're not able to treat anymore in your wastewater system. It's become much more imperative, and I, I know I sound like broke the record when I say this, but it's imperative that you look at water rates annually. And that you adjust water rates consistently to true price increase.
Yep.
Index increases, because, because what happens is, you go through, you know, councils don't like to raise rates. So you go through a ten year period, like you just agreed, we have one and a half percent inflation a year.
Right.
And at the end of ten years, if you haven't raised rates, you're fifteen percent behind inflation.
Yeah. And we found almost all the cities around us have done two or three increases in a year, small.
What my thought process behind this was, this sets us up to be able to get on the level playing field of doing increases normally on a yearly basis, like we should be.
Yeah.
And, and let people know that, look, yes, we're doing an increase, but we're also, we're thinking about what, what we're doing, right? We're, we're increasing across the board, because before, that's kind of what we were doing. We were, we were charging more for the water, and then as they used it, the sewer rate was going up too, so.
Well, and I think that's another good valid point that everyone's bringing up is, is, you know, we do the sandwich billing, yes, it's gonna be a win for the citizens, but we also have to think about the treatment cost of doing that as well.
Gas is high, bread's high, milk's high, we all still buy it, but it's because we get it. That's my theory on it. And, I mean, I got cut off watering my yard ten years ago, and it was looking really good, and my wife said, that's enough. I promise you now that I'm gonna be getting all the water that I'm paying for, and not have to pay for it. I'm gonna fight and fight, and I say, my yard's gonna be green.
Yeah, the people that have life that made on that.
Oh my gosh, I'm so jealous, I see those yards, and they're so green, I'm like, oh, you sucker.
See, Michael gets this real quick, I was asking what the, what's the, right now, what, how is the sewer base, what percentage of the water usage?
By the way, just to prove to everyone, we did the homework, here's fourteen cities.
Oh, wow.
All right, so uh.
It's twenty percent?
Uh it's. Okay, it's, it's a lot. That's water, that's sewer.
So it's about a third. So just so y'all can see.
That's water, that's sewer.
So what you were showing me is a, a water, a nine hundred ninety eight thousand, and the sewer is three hundred thirty five thousand. So it's about a third. The water is about a third of it. Yeah. Chairman entertain a motion on, is there any other further discussion or question?
Almost thirty percent.
Almost thirty?
About thirty, yeah.
How is it, would be, yeah?
Thirty two percent. If I, if I heard your numbers right.
Yeah, nine ninety eight, three thirty five.
It's around thirty two percent. So I mean, that's a big, big deal, I think.
It is a big deal, and if you look at the average billing part, you gotta at least be fair about it, so you're gonna lose thirty five percent of that, thirty percent.
What I was quite, what I was seeing with the problem of the outside water rates, uh we just, we just did those, and I know it's getting more costly, but they don't have any sewer to offset it. So what's gonna happen tomorrow, or tonight, my phone's gonna start ringing.
Your phone's gonna explode.
Yeah, especially tomorrow, so uh. Do we want to make, do we want to make a motion on this, or?
By the way, you also have some trash increases on those sheets too.
Yeah, we hadn't even got to that yet, that's the next line.
How can we set it up to where we can hear from some of them?
What do you mean, hear from them?
Talking about the citizens coming to talk about, yeah. The only way I know of i- is to submit, submit uh questions or concerns, or call.
I was expecting the full house tonight.
Yeah, I kind of was too, because we got a couple of increases.
I mean, I've heard from several, when we, when we did our increase a few years ago.
Yeah.
Because unfortunately, I was.
I think they call, ask a question, or whatever, but if we make a motion and we pass this right now, then there's not, you know, there's, we're not gonna ever turn back. We can't spend it on our wheels.
I understand it, I mean, you know, we're, we're all citizens too, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to pay these prices as well. So it's not like we're, it's not like we're making this decision and we have amnesty and we don't have to, we don't have to feel the same effects, but what I'm trying to tell everybody, and I'm trying to be wholeheartedly honest, is we all see this at the gas pumps, we all see this at the grocery store. It's, I mean, buy a new car today. You know, a truck that used to be sixty thousand dollars is a hundred thousand dollars today. It's a hundred thousand dollars to buy a freaking pickup truck.
You, you shared something with me, Kevin.
That's, that's a house.
That made the light come on.
Vehicle payments are house notes nowadays.
Here's how much of an increase we're talking.
No, I know.
That's what made the light come on for me, when Kevin said, look, here's, here's the increase right here in dollars.
Oh, three dollars, is it three dollars?
Yes.
So three forty, that's an increase uh based on the minimum.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and I want to say this, and I'll probably get nailed to the cross at some point for saying what I'm fixing to say. There's nothing, there is nothing in this world to say at some point, as we get more works done at our water plant, we get more works done at our sewer plant, we get more works done at our distribution system, that this can't go backwards. There's nothing to say that that can't happen.
That's true.
None of us can sit here and say today that we're gonna keep climbing, right?
Yeah.
Because there may be something that happens with, you know, some new filter system, or some new something that changes the whole dead gum process of our water, and it, and it cuts, it cuts the process cost in half, we don't know that. But right now, currently, this is where we're at. I mean, it is, I mean, you know, we might get a grant in ten years that changes our whole water plant over to, what's it, Osmos, or whatever it's called. We don't know what that, I mean, that may cut our costs by who knows how much. Well, obviously, the city can't leave the cost way up here if the cost of us doing business is down here, because that's gonna show its face real quick, and we're gonna look really bad, because all this is open to the public. I mean, we can't just put this, this is not a private business, we can't make a big profit margin. So, I mean, at the end of the day, this is just where we're at, and, and I don't like it, none of us like it.
Such an increase, require resolution?
None of us like it.
Since it isn't, uh, seems to me that.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's on the discussion action.
Well, yeah, 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 that is, but uh, chairman entertain a motion?
Um, all right, so I'll make a motion for item seven B, to raise the, to increase the water rates for estimating of sewer charges for public works.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Kevin Featherstone?
Jack O'Connell? Robin Mays?
Chris Burkett?
It's approved, uh moving on to eight C, I mean, yeah, seven C, I mean, discussion in our action to approve sanitation, dispositions, price increase, and revisiting the fee is charging for garbage service. Uh this is another one that kind of snuck up on us and we weren't expecting. Um and I guess the next time we have to deal with a, a, another contract, which I think this contract ends in twenty twenty five, I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Then we're gonna, you know, we'll, we'll be able to look at this again, but we didn't, you know, we were so laser focused on, on when we did the budgets, that, and I, I sure didn't think about any uh foreseeable increases on, on either, whether it be water or garbage. Uh we just, you know, I didn't, and I'm sure nobody else did, think about such a price increase. It comes out to, what is it, six point five?
Six point five two. It should be on that same sheet you were looking at for water sewer? Okay, seven percent.
They, they did six point five, they did seven percent.
That's right.
So we're looking at a, um.
Seven percent increase.
Seven percent on trash.
Which, which would be, uh, let's see, an eight, ninety eight cent increase?
On the monthly trash, yes.
Monthly trash should be about a ninety eight percent increase on trash, is where it comes out.
Ninety eight cents.
Ninety eight cents, yeah.
Hundred percent.
Sorry, yeah, yeah.
We had a shot, what happened?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Any questions on this?
Yeah, so I'm not familiar with this process, um, didn't we just have an increase in this, like last year? Yeah.
No, it was, uh, year before last year.
It's been two or three years, but they, they actually have the contractual right to come back every year. They just haven't done it.
Okay, now that was the next question is what, what is contracted? Do they build in?
I've got their contract in the hallway.
There's verbiage that says they can do it every year.
Okay, so it's not because the city has grown as.
Right.
It's based on the CPI, they can do it every year.
Okay. But we can't, I mean, these are standard rates. It's not like we can shop around for cheaper, we're still on contract with them. They did us.
Right, we would have to wait until the contract is getting ready to expire to entertain their.
Yeah, it isn't, uh, this agreement doesn't extend our contractual agreement we have now. It's just an, it's just an increase, uh, what Jim said on the CPI. And we need to remember this as we move forward in the, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. We need to look at that, so we're not all surprised in the middle of a budget. And that's what's hit us right now.
And when is that, that contract? We looked at when it expired, I can't.
It's, it's, uh, twenty twenty-five, uh, I think it's October.
It is October and, and, you know, that is sort of a disappointment that we got this after our budget was set because they're, they're well aware what our budget year is. And, and I'll be honest, I, I feel like that that's probably gonna play into how our city and the council will, will view going into another contract.
Well, and they just got bought out by waste connections.
I think you need to go back, I'm not gonna be here, but I think you need to revisit that anyway. And because that, when we contracted with them, they were locally owned.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, true.
They're now nationally owned and I think, you know, I'm not saying they're not gonna do good service. I mean, another company might not do better. I think y'all look at that.
Yeah, no, I believe you.
Because it's not the same thing.
It's not.
Man, did, did, did you disclose the actual amounts for the, uh, the trash? And Michael, y'all may have to remember.
It's seven percent, which is ninety-eight cents.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So right now, I mean, everybody should know it's fourteen dollars a month, right?
Right, that's the monthly fee.
And then it's fourteen ninety-eight with the increase.
Yes.
Yes. It's ninety-eight cents.
And then your, your, your poly cart, if you have just one, it's, it's three dollars. And then with the increase, it's three dollars and twenty-one cents.
Right.
Right? And if you got a second poly cart, it's seven dollars for the second poly cart, it's seven forty-nine with the increase. So that's, I mean, that's the increase, you know, it's, so it's, say if a person has two poly carts and they're trash deal, so they're, they're gonna go up, what, a dollar sixty or so? You know, a dollar sixty, dollar seventy a month. I mean.
I mean, I'm not hearing a choice. They've raised our rates.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just trying to disclose so people will know instead of, because there's gonna be some people that may not see this or get this. Trying to let everybody know, because most everybody out there, all they're hearing is increase, increase, increase. You know, just let everybody know it's the trash, each one of us citizens. It's, if you got two trash cans, it's gonna go up a dollar sixty a month.
So this increase is warranted because of our contract. The water increase is warranted because we are way behind in increase.
The water increase we did in the last, in the last, last council meeting or on the fourth?
It was last one, when we initially talked.
We talked about all the parts. I mean, we, parts, some parts have went up fifty percent, um, you know, and then fuel and I mean, tires for vehicles, I don't know how, who's bought tires lately, but tires for vehicles have went up tremendously, you know? A tire that used to be just under a hundred bucks is like around a hundred and forty.
Yeah.
And I'm talking about vehicle tires, just regular passenger truck tires.
We did the average percentage.
They're legitimate.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
The average percentage, you know, when we had the fifty percent increase in some and, you know, five percent in others, it, it equaled out to about a total of fourteen percent increase overall.
Right, on all, on all of our parts in the average.
Yes.
Make a motion on it. Make a motion, we approve sanitation solution price increase.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Kevin Featherson.
Jack O'Connell.
Ron Mann.
Chris Burkett.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, moving on to number eight, new business. Uh, discussion in our actions to approve or deny the replant of Highway two seventy-six west walk in Texas uh, across from Shenandoah, legal description is A zero one eight six, the Carter Redmond track, one through three acres of seven point seven nine eight. It's also in the A zero one zero two, some commercial, and request is to replant into several lots. And this is what we've talked about in the, in the public hearing. Does anybody have any other questions, concerns, comments?
I will, just so you guys know, they need to go planning and zoning on Thursday and they voted unanimously to approve it.
Is there anybody here for planning and zoning?
That was what I was gonna ask. Thanks for giving us that information. I was gonna ask what the B and Z said.
Sharon had a previous plan prior to becoming chairman, so she.
So they did across the board approve it?
Uh, Chair, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a replant of Highway two seventy-six west walk in Texas up two seventy-six uh, from Shenandoah, commercial to replant to several lots.
I second that.
Kevin second, all in favor?
Kevin Featherson.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, discussion in our actions to approve the second reading ordinance number three zero six dash twelve dash twelve in twenty twenty-three, which is an ordinance providing limitations of the weight of motor vehicles operated upon city streets, prohibiting the operation of certain motor vehicles upon city streets, providing for permits for overweight vehicles, designating truck routes, containing other provisions related to the subject, uh, providing a penalty of an amount not to exceed five hundred dollars for each violation and any provision hereof, providing, uh, for repeal of conflicting ordinances or parts thereof. This is something I think most everybody's had a concern about over the years is these big trucks going up down roads. We can't help the trash trucks, we can't help the buses. Uh, the bus is pretty lightweight compared to a, a garbage truck, but we're trying to cut down on some of these, that's why we're losing our roads. One of the, one, one of the reasons, a lot, most of it's water and other, uh, extenuating circumstances we can't do, but, it's something we've talked about is, is creating an ordinance for this. Shannon, it's right here. If anybody had any questions about this.
I second Kevin's opinion. I'll just, I'll make a motion that we approve item A B discussion, uh, for the ordinance number three zero six dash twelve dash twelve dash twenty twenty-three for weight limiting on city roads.
I'll second that.
Chris second, all in favor?
Kevin Featherson.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, eight C, discussion in our actions to approve ordinance number three zero seven dash zero one dash zero nine dash twenty twenty-four, uh, which is an ordinance admitting the code of ordinances, chapter nine, traffic regulations of the city of West Tewocany, providing for a penalty of a fine not to exceed, exceed five hundred dollars for each offense, providing a savings clause, providing a severability clause, providing a repealer clause, and provide for publication and provide for an effective date. This is what we just talked about.
I have a question on this one on page four. This special speaker, it says state highway thirty-five, should that be?
That is what our ordinance currently says. And if you use GPS, this shows up as state highway thirty-five and as highway two seventy-six. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
I guess tomato, tomato, probably is. I changed it on one, I said, that.
I haven't even seen it.
Um, Chair, entertain a motion. Eight C. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Do I change that to highway two seventy-six?
Let me be clear, if you change it to two seventy-six.
I can.
Yeah.
It's on.
There was one other change. You didn't see what I sent back?
No, it wasn't in my email when I left this.
There was, there was one other change I made and it was on the emergency. It says the mayor can, can make emergency, uh, traffic control decisions.
That is because our ordinance now says that.
I think it should also include the police, chief of police should be able to make those emergency decisions.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I agree. I agree.
I have to put that in and I, I'm looking for a place where it goes in.
Do we need to take a look until that reprint comes out?
No.
Basically, what this did was add more control for, like, our streets, parking on streets, um, abandoned vehicles, an improvement of parking, people just park wherever they want to. It also allows for our police.
What? Oh, okay, okay, okay.
It's in paragraph four G, it says the mayor is hereby empowered to install or erect, I think it should say the mayor or the chief of police.
Okay.
I agree.
I'll edit.
Chair, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve item eight C, uh, for ordinance number three oh seven dash zero one dash zero nine dash twenty twenty-four with the changes for highway two seventy-six, or highway thirty-five to be changed to highway two seventy-six. And in paragraph four G.
Four G.
Four G, um, with adding the, the mayor, I guess the mayor's already in there for traffic control.
Yeah.
And then we add the chief of police in there. In that four G for the traffic control.
I'll second.
Jack second, all in favor?
Kevin Featherson.
Jack O'Connell.
Ron Mann.
Chris Burkett.
Ladies and gentlemen, um, item eight D, discussion in our actions to approve ordinance number three zero eight dash zero one dash zero nine dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the city of West Tewocany for, uh, providing for backflow prevention, uh, providing for severability and that this ordinance shall become effective, uh, and at risk passage and adoption and, and publication in the official newspaper of the city, which would be the, the banner, I guess it is.
We have to do that with every ordinance, anyway?
Every ordinance it has a penalty clause.
Yes.
Could you kind of give us an explanation of what backflow prevention is?
Absolutely, absolutely. First, let me start off by, by making this very simple. We are one of a few cities in the state that doesn't have this in place already. Almost every city in the state of Texas already has this in place and has had it for many, many years. The state of Texas says that it is our responsibility and obligation to protect our water system at, at all costs, which means, you know, let's, let's use an RV park, for example. If every single RV does not have an air breaker on it where the connection is made to the RV, that is a violation in the state of Texas, obviously. It's a violation because now you can have cross contamination. If that water comes back through that water hose and goes backwards to a meter, we could be in trouble.
Expand, expand why so they'll understand.
So.
Most people are probably thinking, how's it come back to the water hose? Your RV has a tank, right?
Yes.
And there's a tank in there that can, can cross contaminate because they could have gotten that water that's in the tank from another area and then it could suck the water out of their tank into the hose and put it back into our waters.
What happens when, when your city side loses pressure, when we have a, a main breaker or something?
It's called backside, it's backside and it pulls what it waters in their line back.
Pull waters in there.
Ever been there?
So the more I read on this, the more scary it got, so I don't wanna scare anyone. I will just tell you that we have some parks here and this includes mobile home parks as well. They're required, that's called an RPZ. So once the water travels through this device, it cannot come back. It will not come back.
Still three or four out of park, it is not?
Well, if you're talking about air breakers, yes. The vacuum breaker, that's, you know, thirty-five cents. But if you're talking about RPZ, the average cost for, let's say, two that are right here close to City Hall would be about a hundred dollars to a hundred and fifty dollars for an RPZ. Then, of course, they have to pay someone to install them. Also, the state of Texas requires that they are inspected annually, every year. So that's, that's another cost that will be accrued by that park or whoever. Um, but this, this whole thing, and if you read it in detail, basically what it's telling you is it's our responsibility to protect our water system.
So is it primarily affecting the RVs and mobile homes?
RVs and mobile homes, yeah. Mobile home parks, so let's say.
Reintegrate rest traffic code?
Yes, I wasn't gonna say it, but yes. So you have a mobile, mobile home park that doesn't meet all the standards that, let's say, a rustic house does. And they have an issue, there's a leak, and you get a backside from that park, that's not good.
Yeah.
So.
Is it the park's responsibility to install us or?
It is. It is. And basically, what else this says is that as a city, we are entitled, if you will, to, as long as it's within reason, so within business hours, we can go into any of these places at any time for any reason to do an inspection if we feel that there is a potential for a cross contamination. So let's say the park right here next to us has a water main break in the park. And we can go out there and look at that situation. Let's say the break is in the park and there's a break right before the meter. We can go and observe the repair and make sure that it's done correctly and make sure that they, you know, put sixty-five percent hydrochloride in the line during the repair, things like that. So like right now, if they have a break in the park, there could be a backside through the meter.
So this has to be reactionary. If, if there is an issue, you have to inspect it and then you can oversee it.
Yes.
But it's not proactive, you're gonna, or whoever goes to each park to ensure that there are.
New additions, things like that, that would be required from the very beginning. But the ones that are existing, yes, we're gonna have to be reactive and we'll have to notify them and let them know they have so many days to have this.
Yeah, nobody will isolate that pretty quick. Don't they, you know, chain, maybe, maybe regular will be the RV park?
Yes.
The other ones, once they do an inspection on them, I mean, those, usually those RVs like in Rustic Oaks, they don't move.
Right. But they still would be required.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And they have a double feed, so each, each connection has to be.
Have any parks in the city already done this?
No.
No.
Not one.
We've been working on it, I guess.
We've been talking about it and this is actually, if you think about it, last year, we started talking about this and we needed to get this in place to protect the city.
Why do I remember something about commercial restaurants or something?
Restaurants as well have to have them.
Okay.
And, and you're probably thinking about the grease trap conversations we've been having for two years now. That's also.
Something, they were places that had some change or something?
Well, the problem is, is you got all these fountains that mix the, the syrup with the water. And they have been, and those inspections are done, you know, when you're, you're fixing to open the business.
Yeah.
And they're supposed to be done annually, once you go in and make sure there's no cross contamination possible from the water and then the syrup mixing. There has to be check valves and things like that, make sure. Just like in a restaurant, you know, underneath your sink, there has to be a two-inch air gap. You cannot just.
I think that was a conversation we had two years ago.
Yes, we've been talking about this for a while, so.
Okay.
Okay, Chair, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve item eight D for ordinance number three zero eight dash zero one dash zero nine dash twenty twenty-four for the backflow prevention.
I'll second.
Jack second, all in favor?
Kevin Featherson.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett.
Moving on to eight E, discussion in our actions to approve resolution number three four dash twelve dash twelve in twenty twenty-three, a resolution of the city council of the city of West Tewocany authorized the chief of police to enter into a mutual, mutual, multiple use agreement. I thought it was a mutual, but multiple uh, use agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation, allowing the installation and operation of automatic license plate recognition cameras uh, in Texas Department of Transportation right away and providing for an effective date. Achieve that.
So basically, the cameras that we've gotten that read license plates coming in and out of the city on certain roads, this is just allowing them to put those up.
On the, on the highway.
Right, good. I, I know, I know this has kind of been a hot topic around the city, uh, thinking that we've got these cameras that's recording all these license plates and they need to know that these license plate readers do not, they don't take data and store it. We don't, we can't share the data. We don't, there's no way for us to go see a, a license plate and go back on it. It only picks up what's in the database, is that correct? If there's a database for stolen vehicle, silver or amber alert, warrants?
Program like that for, uh, alerts on stolen vehicles and stuff that we, like I said, silver alerts, amber alerts, uh, things like that. Or if we're looking for a certain vehicle, it will.
But we, but that didn't, it doesn't read all the. But we, but that didn't, it doesn't read all the license plate and store that license plate number somewhere, right?
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does.
It does. So what's their.
But not on our data. It's in the cloud or whatever.
Yeah, we can go back to the cloud.
Oh, okay.
People with warrants.
Yeah. I mean, but what, yeah, we don't, you can't, it's illegal in the state to write citations off of a camera.
That's correct, yeah.
So we don't write citations or nothing. What is, what it really meant for is, there's only three ways in and out of this city. So say your house gets burglarized and around the time or something happens, then we can go back and look at all the vehicles that went through with the license plate and read them around the hours of, you know, up to the minute of when they came through.
CSI kind of stuff.
Yeah. What it gives, what it gives them is just what you just said. Say, say we have a robbery down here in Billy's, right? And they know it was a white Chevrolet fifteen hundred with tag number, whatever. Well, they can go real quick in their car. I think, I think you and John can do it from your phones, can't you?
Yeah.
And they can go in there and they can punch it in. And I only know because I helped them put one up. Okay, so I was, I, I had the. I had the excitement. I had the excitement of being able to see it. Yeah, I asked questions too. So they can go into that system and punch in white Chevrolet pickup. You can do it either that way or you can, they can go in there and punch in the license plate and go boom. And if it hasn't triggered one of these cameras, not a hundred percent that it hasn't left our city, but probably ninety eight percent, because there's gonna be times that they don't read. They don't catch a license plate for whatever reason. But that's gonna give them a pretty good zone to look for this robbery person.
Yeah.
Within our city. Or they can say, it went out that way. Then they can get on their radios and call Quinlan and call whoever and say, hey, I've been looking for this white Chevy pickup with license plate one, two, three, four. I mean, it's a great tool.
It's the same thing that's in our cars. All the cars, the license plate readers in the car, they read up to twelve license plates at a time.
And East Walkeny's got this system, and what about Quinlan?
Uh, Quinlan don't have it. East Walkeny has it. The insurance department has it.
How can it share it?
I hate to put a secret out there and mess up repo world, but I hope everybody knows repo companies have had these for years. Repo companies.
All those cameras on those repo trucks, that's all they're doing.
Yeah, yeah, I see. I see them go through a parking lot.
So this is.
It also shares with, I mean, we've had several stolen cars. We can go all through all the cameras within the state of Texas and we can find the car anywhere in the state of Texas to go read.
So this is a deterrent, right? I mean, it really is to tell people.
And it also.
Do they, and they can use this evidence in court, right? That you have.
Find missing people, find.
Yeah.
People with bad warrants. They can do all kinds of stuff. It's an awesome tool.
Yes, correct.
I'm excited for at least one of the happen.
Yeah, because you know, like, uh, Windmill Farm. Yeah, all the community of Windmill Farm. They've got, every street in their town has got one on.
There's a hundred, I think it's a hundred or something.
The city of Fordham's got one on every street in there.
It's Alphalia.
Your park on the bridge. It's walkers.
They can, they can do all, they can do all images. They get bicycles and walkers.
Chair, entertain a motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to accept resolution number three eight four dash twelve dash twelve dash twenty twenty three.
They write them first and you second? I'm second. Chris second, all in favor?
Kevin Featherson.
Jack O'Connell.
Get them up, chief.
Item number nine. Uh, discussion and reaction to approve West Walkeny Economic Development Corporation to reinstate Allison Belle Z. I'm not even gonna try. Sorry, Allison. Chair, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, West Walkeny Economic Development to reinstate Allison Belle Z.
Can I ask, I mean.
Yes.
I'm really kind of surprised that nobody's here. So.
She might be at work.
Well, I mean, nobody from either representing EDC or anything. I mean, and I understand, I mean, we all have jobs. Well, maybe not all of us, but I mean, I get that. And my other question, I was hoping that either she or somebody from EDC would be here. My question was, uh, I mean, she resigned from EDC, so what my question was, what's changed?
Well, I, I can answer that. Whenever she, she was on the EDC and then she had taken a job, I want to say cleanup.
Okay.
And so there was no way that she's gonna be able to make these meetings.
I got you.
Every month. So she went ahead and resigned.
Right.
And she doesn't have that job any longer.
And I'll tell you that EDC president Mrs. Brady, her grandson passed away this, this morning. So she's with her family right now, while they're in Los Angeles, apparently. So that's one way.
Okay. Don't know if you don't ask.
Chris first, second.
I second.
Chris second, all in favor?
Kevin Featherson.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett.
It is unanimous. Moving on to item number ten, discussion and our action on all American dogs. Shannon Ferguson, you're up.
So something we're running into is when our animal control picks up a dog, they don't have a way to notify the people who own the dogs if we are aware of whose dog it is. So what happens is when they get a dog, we can tell them who the owner is and give them a phone number. They'll call them. If they can get them before they leave the city, they get their dog back without a fee. If they cannot, it costs the citizen money to get their dog back. We do not release those phone numbers right now. We need clearance for you guys to do that. They, I mean, they're basically an extension of the city, so we're not handing it out to just anybody. We're actually handing it out to one of our employees.
I don't see a problem with that.
I don't see a problem.
I don't see, like.
I would know.
I mean, I don't see it any different than you giving John somebody's.
There is some dogs that we do know who they've launched and run loose.
Well, let me tell you how you're turning it out. They're supposed to be registered. So hopefully, hopefully when these dogs are getting picked up and released back, they must register them before they get them back. Maybe that's something we need to start.
Maybe we need to.
Implement with.
Do they have a chip scanner on their catcher, on their catcher card or?
I honestly don't know.
Um.
I can't remember if they do or not.
I'm almost positive he mentioned.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I'm almost, I'm almost. Yeah, I'm almost positive he mentioned that in his.
He did, yes, he did.
They have.
They do. They have the chip, yes.
Okay, thank you. My memory was half there.
You mean the scanner?
Yeah, they have the scanner.
They have, they have that.
And I do ask people when they register if their animals are chipped, to please put it on the registration.
Yeah. But, but anyway, but that's how, that's how we would know as the city is that they're registered.
One problem we came up, uh, I guess this is last week, one problem that we had regarding picking up animals. They will come up and come out and pick up an animal, but we had a problem last week with a pool ad. Somebody felt sorry for the dog. It was dumped on the road and they started feeding it water. And when that happens.
You own it.
We basically own the animals. It's our responsibility.
That's not our, like, our ordinance or law. That's a state law.
Yeah, exactly.
That's a state law.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we, we have, we're held by state laws, but we're also held by our own ordinances. But that's, that's a state law. That's not something that West Walkeny made up.
Please register your dogs and keep them busy. If you have a problem, uh, let's get it fixed. But, uh, we want this to go smooth. And I've only heard of one, one problem this far, so.
You know, in the town I'm moving to, they have a law that says you can't feed the alligators. I wonder if it's the same.
Holy crap.
What you're looking for is a motion to approve allowing.
Yeah, for the city to release phone numbers to animal control.
I'll make a motion. We approve the city to release the phone numbers for the All American Dog.
I'll second that.
Chris, Kevin, all in favor?
Kevin Featherson.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett.
And we have also added the contact information to our webpage. If you go under the government tab, All American Dogs, there's the number you can use to contact them.
Uh, moving on, I'm gonna skip eleven for a moment. I wish I'd have thought of this, sir, when we were talking, uh, about the contract with the MVBA for collection purposes for the water department. We're currently using this company for our court collections. And what we want to do is move, move them into collections of our outstanding water bills. You got anything, either one of you guys or sir, you got anything?
Everything's in the packet that, that you may need to know.
For citizens that are listening and watching in.
So for the citizens listening and watching in, or it's gonna be for outstanding bills that people have moved off and left in debt with us.
After four years.
Yeah, after four years. And it'll be, um, what is it, less than fifty dollars, we set that fee of how much?
That was your choice.
Yeah. So I think we can set the fee as to how.
You can have a minimum, like where we won't go after somebody if they owe twenty dollars. We can just close it out. But if it's bigger, so like if y'all want to agree on the amount or something for a minimum.
I know we haven't had anything in place in the last two and a half years for collections. It hasn't been done. So it really needs to get done so that we can try to recoup some money back into the water department.
How much, how much, do you know how much is outstanding?
I doubt. I'd have to get somebody to make a report to pull it. I think the, the company that we're using previous, they had to go back and actually pull all the filed out accounts and pull it that way. That's a lot of red, a lot of paperwork. I think we should just get enhanced to create a report that will pull the outstanding bills for a certain amount of date, like for the last four years. And for a certain, a certain bill, you know, nothing under fifty dollars will get pulled.
I'm afraid if you try to go four years, you're gonna be wasting a lot of somebody's time.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's how far they'll go back. I mean.
I stand you. That's as far as we can go.
Yeah, and I stopped that for a second because court has a way, a lot more outstanding, and we pulled back to court knows when.
Yeah, but.
They all have a lot more to stand on.
If we have a complaint in the file, on the municipal court file, we can go with that.
Yeah, I mean, we still did a limit.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, if we did the four years, I don't think that it would be a crazy amount.
Your court's a little bit different. Your court is a legal thing. It kind of connects to a driver's license. It kind of connects to some other things. What I'm getting at is, I'm, I'm afraid if we tried to go back four years on past or delinquent water bills or whatever, it's probably gonna be quite a bit of someone's time that I don't know.
Probably not.
I don't, I don't know what the yield's gonna be.
So I mean, but you can only correct.
Correct.
They only get sent if they collect.
Yeah.
And it's thirty percent, is that correct?
That's correct. Our, our fee is thirty percent. You have two options on the thing to pick. Either the city can eat the fee or there's a, uh, a copy of an ordinance in there that the city could pass that we put it off on the debtor.
Which is what you'd want to do.
Well, absolutely. I guess I missed that part when I read through this.
And we don't have to go back four years.
I mean, what is the minimum gonna be for your company to, to actually proactively go and search that out? Y'all gotta have a minimum. You're not gonna waste your time on fifty dollars, are you?
Yes, sir. They do all collect.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, they're not.
And it's not one guy sitting there making collections. It's a computer generating, doing skip tracing and all the stuff that they do. Computers generate this stuff, generate the demands and.
Yeah.
Pretty impressive.
So I got you. So, yeah, and then, I mean, it, it, you only get paid on what you, you only get paid on what you kill.
Well, I would set a limit then. I don't want to set a limit in that case. If we're talking about for water bills. I mean, the majority of these water bills have had, I think, fifteen, ten years ago, the deposit was two hundred dollars.
I think, I think the question to that would be, would they suggest or would they like to see us set a limit? I mean, this is, anytime you start working with somebody, it's a partnership. It's not a, you know.
It is. What we look at is, you're the client. If you turn it over to us, we're gonna try and pull that.
Do most people set limits or do, do, I mean?
It's all over the board. It's, it's all over the board.
Okay. Then if they don't care, then we don't care.
Yeah.
But y'all also need to understand that on AR collections for water, you're not gonna see a huge return.
No, no.
Well, that's what I say, that even though the deposit nowadays, it's hard to go over that. Although it's a little difficult to go over the deposit amount. I know, I know it doesn't happen.
So then I think we do it, but then we're gonna have to get an ordinance in place too.
A current bill and one that they're passing through and they're at their deposit.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Or they're over the deposit.
So I think we do it, but then we're gonna have to put an ordinance on our next meeting, I guess.
But they get like that, you got an existing plus a current. If it's not paid, then water gets shut off, right?
Well, we have the current bill that's due, then your thirty day passive. And then by then, we find out they skipped them.
And then you're running into another reading because you run away.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
Should I ask one more question?
Okay.
So you said that there's very little success rate or not as much as we would think. So maybe I missed it in there. Is there, or maybe I missed the question, is there a minimum that if you have a year's worth of work and you've only collected twenty dollars, that we're gonna get hit with a fee?
No.
Okay.
It's thirty percent of whatever they collect.
No matter what.
Yeah, they don't matter what.
If, if you pass, if the council passes that ordinance, then we remain zero cost to the city.
Yeah. So we'll have to, so I wanna make a motion that we enter into a contract with MVBA for collection purposes for water department, um, with us doing the ordinance. That the cost of, of the service will be passed on to the debtor.
There's a set ordinance.
Yeah, so we'll have an ordinance on our next council meeting.
Kevin made a, for you, another question?
I'll second.
Uh, Jack second, all in favor?
Kevin Featherson.
Jack O'Connell.
Thank you.
Chris Burkett.
I apologize. I, I, I remembered seeing this. I didn't, I didn't look at my agenda or anything all day today until I got here.
Moving back to.
I seen it this weekend. I forgot to highlight it. I was gonna ask to move y'all up.
I, that's why I say I apologize. We even talked before anybody got here and I just didn't see where it was.
I thought I highlighted it, but I only highlighted stuff on the front page, apparently, and I didn't highlight that.
Okay, moving on, back to number, back to number eleven. Uh, you're more welcome to stick around or?
You're about done.
In your packet, uh, number eleven, discussion on action on the city of West Walkeny walking packet. This is just a, I want to get something out to everybody. I need a lot of input from the Public Works Code Police. Uh, those are the main ones. I want to get this in the hands of so that they can make suggestions too. As far as what goes in the packet. We're calling it a welcome packet, but what's gonna happen whenever we do roll this out, we'll get it to all citizens, uh, whether they're new or not. And then they're going forward, they'll get a new packet whenever they come and turn the water on. We'll do that. But we, we really need something to help Michael's department out. They're talking about what not to put down at the toilet and stuff. We need things like that. Uh, we need things from Shannon about permits. Cause a lot of people, there was a, a guy from California, not in our neighborhood, a year or two ago. He, he started doing all these additions and adding on and stuff. And he said they didn't have permits in California. Well, that's true or not, but.
I, I'm very much not.
It's gonna be a whole lot more stringent than here.
It may have been the county lived in or something else, but here, you know, we didn't, we have, we've had ordinances in our, you know, ordinances in here for a long time, but, you know, years ago, nobody followed us. Nobody, there was nobody to enforce it. No, I mean, it just, if somebody happened to be passing by and saw something, but, you know, we've had none of that. Shannon's done an outstanding job coming in here two years ago. Yeah, two years ago. Already. Uh, but anyway, I need everybody to look at this and what kind of things we want it. As you can see in the packet, uh, I don't know whether to make this like a tri-fold thing. It just depends on the information that we've got. But we wanna get this in the hands of Shannon, Michael, you can, you too, Kevin, and Chief, wherever he's at. I need some, we need some feedback on this.
Is this where we could make it an E packet where it could be on the website or anything so that anybody can have access to it, not just somebody coming in?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Pick a piece of paper, it could be on the website.
Yeah, we can have a link.
And this is a very, very rough, rough version, so if you're not hurt my feelings.
But that was a very rough that I jotted down too.
And I just haven't had time.
Mayor, what I'm hearing you say is we need, we need Public Works code enforcement. Mayor, what I'm hearing you say is we need, we need Public Works, Code Enforcement and Police Department to get with Jack.
Yes.
And, and give her some input of what they think needs or want to be in there, and then she's probably gonna put all that together and then we'll probably look at seeing this in our January meeting.
Yes, that was right.
If they, if those, if those three departments could get with her between now and January meeting and, and give the informations that, that will be pertinent to, to be on this.
Right, and we, uh, she's provided a phone number, uh, and an email address to send this to as well, Shannon has.
Do you have a preference, email or phone, Jack?
Either one.
Balls in y'all's court, so Chief's not in here, so.
Yeah, and I'm open to ideas too, so city council, I mean, this is supposed to be for everyone, so, you know, let's help support our businesses, our organizations in addition to our, our departments.
Right, and one of those.
He never got a copy of this. He, Chris never got a copy of it.
Oh.
Oh, we have so much ones over there too.
Uh, and, and Kim's got on here with notes, uh, to the alternative city hall membership, adding the welcome packet, iris notification form, if you're not, if you're not on iris, please do so, there's a form, uh, when you go up to city hall and get a, uh, iris alert, you can get notifications of weather, uh, water outages, things like that, uh, over your phone, text, or email, or all three. Uh, and it's very good, you find out about boil notices, you find out about a, a leak that they're trying to fix, and that's usually the first thing they do. Uh, Michael will, as soon as a leak happens, it goes over twenty minutes, then we're, we're on the iris, putting something out, so, um, but, uh, anyway, uh, there's also a fire, a, a volunteer fire department, uh, donation, uh, in here that you can sign, huh? Oh, yeah, 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 I, I don't know, I see what you're saying.
Oh, yeah, I just randomly pulled, yeah.
But anyways, it's given the option to add three dollars or whatever you'd like to the monthly water bills to the water volunteer fire department, as well as, I think there's a bank draft one right here, iris.
ACH.
Yeah, yeah, and there's a, there's a, this is a form here at city hall that, that anyone can get.
Mayor, what do we got?
Yeah, just give them a word then. Whenever you're passing out.
It's, it's the, uh, the form that's in this packet, it, uh, shows the West Walkeney volunteer.
Yeah, it's not the right form.
It's just the wrong, we just need to redo that form, or it's already been redone on that one.
Yeah, that's not the form that we use, correct.
But you, you have an updated one, tell me.
The volunteer department?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not the right.
The donation? I don't, we don't need it.
We'll address it afterward, but that's not even the one that's on file here, it shouldn't be, hasn't been in many years.
There are.
I think we redid it.
That's what I was asking.
I think we redid the form.
Yeah, that's what I was asking about.
Well, the words you pulled off, off-line or something.
That was included in the packet, yeah. But my name and number is not on this, so everyone, my information is here.
Okay, uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna table this and revisit this in January, on January ninth, is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir, that's what I'm thinking, so I make a motion, we table this and we revisit it with all the updated informations and inputs, um, in January.
Good, Kevin first, you second? Chris second, all in favor.
Did you say, yeah, Jack O'Connell?
Kevin Featherson.
I thought you always start.
Chris Burkett.
It is, unanimous, uh, moving on to number thirteen, the chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to a chairman.
I was letting somebody else have it. I'll second.
You second, all in favor?
Kevin Featherson.
Jack O'Connell.
We are.